Good evening and welcome to our June 26 regular school board meeting. At this time, could you please rise if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Board, we're going to be working from a revised agenda this evening. This includes the addition of liquid dairy milk product bid award and pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees to the consent agenda and the removal of the employee agreement probationary from the consent agenda. And we had one recognition for Dakota Hawks Adaptive Softball PI and CI that we're going to postpone. We're going to recognize them at the July 24 regular school board meeting. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as outlined with those changes.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Sutchen and a second by Jackie. Y'all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda passes on a six-zero vote. Next up, we have an agenda packed with recognition, school board recognition today, which is some of our most important and favorite parts of our school board meeting. At this time, I would like to welcome head speech coach Daniel Hodges to introduce the Apple Valley High School Speech Team.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Mary Krieger. My name is Scott Foss. I am not Daniel Hodges. He was unable to make it today, but I am one of the assistant coaches at Apple Valley Speech and Debate. I'm here to honor and celebrate and express our gratitude to the community for this amazing season we've had. I'm going to acknowledge a number of individuals on both the state and the national level. This year, Apple Valley High School took second in the state for its final placings. It included a number of individuals that I would like to make note of, including junior Connor Smith, who took fifth place in drama, and Lucinda Standifer, who took fourth place in Drana, and Hoda Husen, who took fourth place in oratory. And she is a first-year student who has made that distinction. I'd also like to point out that Sophia Tadaro took seventh place, and Sophia will actually be attending Western Kentucky University on a scholarship to compete at the number-one school in the nation for speech and debate at the collegiate level. So we're very proud of Sophie Tadaro. Our top three finishes included Wayne Southwell, who is not here tonight, took third in pros; Mafaz Mohammed Ali, who took second in oratory; and we had two state champions, Lydia Voss in original oratory and Sophie Green in informative speaking. Lydia Voss is a graduating senior, and she'll be attending Northwestern University next year, and Sophie Green will be attending Williams in Massachusetts, both of which receive presidential scholarships for, in part because of their accomplishments in speech and debate. We also attended a couple of different national tournaments, and we want to point out two of them in particular. One was the NCFL tournament in Louisville, Kentucky, that they competed at over Memorial Day weekend. Sixteen hundred students, four hundred and twenty-one schools, and we had a number of outstanding finishes, including Lane Donnell, who took sixth place in oral interpretation. Lane will be headed to Chicago next year to Columbia University to study acting and performance. We also had a third-place finish with Wayne Southwell and Lydia Voss in duo. And we had a second place, Isaiah Craig, who is also a first-year student in declamation. Of particular note, Apple Valley actually had four national champions at that tournament, which I honestly have never heard of before, including Fadumo Dalal, national champion in oral interpretation. Fadumo is a graduating senior and has been accepted into St. Thomas University; Anaya Bostic, who is a ninth grader, national champion in declamation; Mafaz Mohammed Ali, a national champion in original oratory; and two seniors, Habak Hassan and Emily Melville, who are the national champions in duo, could not be here tonight. Habak, both of them are actually at orientation for their colleges. Habak Hassan will go to the University of Minnesota. Emily Melville has been accepted on a full ride to Northern Michigan. And then finally, we have a number of NSDA finalists. This is the Grand National Tournament, the end of the year. Six thousand students compete in this. In fact, it started with a pool of eighty thousand students of those six thousand qualified for this tournament, fourteen hundred schools. So to make it to the top six here is absolutely amazing. It includes Leah Willingham, who finishes sixth overall but places second in speaker awards. Leah will accept a scholarship to Michigan State next fall. Sophie Green, sixth place in informative speaking; Jihan Abdi, who took fourth place in original oratory. Jihan is graduating from Apple Valley and will be attending Harvard next fall; Habak Hassan, not here tonight, took third in program oral and terp; Mafaz Mohammed Ali took third in original oratory; and we had Isaiah Craig and Fadumo Dalal take second in duo, but also winning the final round. Of special note, it was only the second tournament that they had been to. Apple Valley placed in the top ten in the nation for both speech and debate, and there was only one other school in the nation that had the same number of national finalists as Apple Valley High School. We couldn't do this without the remarkable support of our Fine Arts Director, Bill Blatzheim, our constant support of our Principal Drew Mons, as well as the remarkable support and gratitude we get at the district level from Tony Taschner, Michael Bolzoni, the Superintendent and the Board of Education. We are immense. I come back from all of these trips, and I'm reminded of how privileged I am to be a part of a community that values this particular activity and values education. So congratulations and thank you.
All right. Next up, I'd like to welcome head speech and assistant debate coach Ross Igle to introduce the Eagan High School Speech Team.
Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm honored to be able to recognize a couple of students. One who couldn't be here tonight from the state speech meet, Lauren Steenberg, who took third place in storytelling. She has been a graduating senior, going to the U of M next year. She's coached by one of our teachers, who's also a graduate of this district, Kathleen Westgard. So it's an honor to be able to have that in. And then able to be with us tonight is Oma Wakjira, who is a junior. We look forward to what he'll do as a senior next year. He took third place in poetry this year at the state tournament, so we are excited for him. And while I have the opportunity, before we come around and shake hands, I also want to recognize and thank Ryan Rosine, who hosted the state speech tournament at Eastview for the second time. It's a tremendous honor and privilege to be able to do that and to bring recognition to the district. It's wonderful. So thank you for the opportunity to be here and to our school administration for supporting us. And Oma, keep up the great work.
All right, excellent. And next up, I'd like to welcome head speech and assistant debate coach Ryan Rosine to the podium to introduce us to the Eastview High School Speech Team.
Well, good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger. It's an honor to be here every year, it seems, honoring students that have tremendous success in speech and debate. So tonight, we are here to recognize our top three finishers at the Minnesota State High School League Tournament, as well as our top finishers at the National Speech and Debate Tournament. So with us here tonight, I'll start with Faye Zhang here, who is the national runner-up in the category of United States Extemporaneous Speaking. For Faye, this is her third time that she has reached an elimination round at this tournament, appearing in semifinals as a sophomore and quarterfinals as a junior. Faye is coached by Hall of Fame coach Todd Herring. I also will mention that Faye finished fourth at the state tournament in extemporaneous speaking, and next year she will be off to the University of Georgia. Also with us tonight, we have Caitlin Mayot. Caitlin finished second in the category of pros at the Minnesota State Speech Tournament. As a team member for three years, she also qualified for the National Speech and Debate Tournament, and she placed thirteenth this year. She is coached by Brady Beckman and Jess Feji, and she will attend St. Olaf next fall. Not here tonight, we have Ally Nathan, who is not here tonight. She placed third in the category of extemporaneous speaking at the state tournament and also represented a team placing eighth at the national tournament in June. Ally's coach is also Todd Herring. And I also recognize Sahithi Attlerie, who could not be here, but she was the state champion in the category of creative expression and placed sixth at the national tournament in the category of humor. Sahithi is only a sophomore, so it'll be fun to see what she can do in the next few years. And she is coached by Brady Beckman, Jess, and Jim Feji. As a result of the hard work of the members that are here and those that could not make it tonight, the Eastview Speech Team placed third in team sweeps at the state tournament. At the National Speech and Debate Tournament, Eastview was awarded a School of Excellence in Speech, and that award is given to schools placing the top twenty programs in speech events in the nation. So it's one of the most coveted awards that a team can win. So again, it's a lot of hard work from the coaches, but obviously the students put all of their time and effort into it, and it's an absolute pleasure to work with these two that are here, the students that cannot be here, because not only are they talented, very talented, but they're also absolutely wonderful people as well. And they will definitely be leaders that we'll be hearing about in the future as they move on. So help me in congratulating them.
Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger, my name is Jay Hatley. I am the head boys track and field coach at Rosemont High School. One item of business, before I get to my duties as boys coach, I'm also representing the girls program right now. The girls had a state champion that I would like to recognize. Jordan Heck is her name, and Jordan won her third state championship as a track and field athlete in the shot put to go with her two discus state championships. And the reason she cannot be here is because she is already at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point. She left a few days ago. And so obviously, high-quality human being and proud of her accomplishments within our track and field program. Okay, now shifting gears to the boys. So I'm the boys track and field coach. Like I said, we've got about a hundred and seventy guys on our team. Seventeen kids competed in the state meet, and three of, four of them are here tonight to represent our program, and we're happy that they did it. So we, on last June 8th and 10th, we won the Minnesota State High School League Team Championship in Class AAA. And so like I said, we had seventeen guys that were in the meet. I'm going to rattle through the guys that placed, the guys that scored points for our team, a couple special notes at the end, and then that'll take care of the recognition. So pole vault Noah Rodenwald, Jr., was ninth place. Four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay Joey Downs, Rudy Ameskuah Schuman, Patrick Gronkley, and George Edgar were ninth place. One-ten hurdles Grantham Green, second place, fourteen point twenty-six, all-time fastest hurdler at Rosemont High School history. Sixteen-hundred-meter Ryan Mulrooney was ninth place. He came back in the eight-hundred and was seventh place. Three-hundred intermediate hurdles, our first representative is here, Mackey Whelan, sorry, was second, and Grantham Green was fourth. Four-by-four-hundred-meter relay Cade Gilbertson, Will Harder, again, Mackey Whelan, Jackson Ganzer, they placed fourth. Our four-by-one did not place, but they ran well all season long, and I want to mention Riddick, Riddick Collier, representing that group, along with Chance Swanson, Cade Gilbertson, and Jackson Ganzer again. And then in the shot put, Noah Lindsay came through with a big fifth-place finish for us. Also in the shot put, Hayden Bills was the state champion. Will Riddle was a fifth-place finisher in the discus, and Hayden Bills came back and was again state champion in the discus. And so a couple of quick mentions to kind of wrap things up. We ended the season with a state championship. Fourteen all-state athletes scored sixty-nine points at the state high school league meet. And our guy Hayden Bills ended up as the all-time record holder in the shot put and discus, and that's not like a state meet record. That's the best throw that's ever existed in the state. He was named the Star Tribune and Pioneer Press Track and Field Athlete of the Year. Just today, he was named the Star Tribune Male Athlete of the Year in combination with his football accomplishments. I just got word that he's a finalist for the Gatorade Track and Field Athlete of the Year, and statistically speaking, he is the best track and field athlete in the history of the state of Minnesota regardless of events. So I'm extremely happy that he was a part of our program, extremely proud of these guys, and extremely excited for the future.
Coach Zach Roble to introduce to the Apple Valley High School Track and Field Team.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Zach Roble, and I'm the varsity boys track and field coach, as well as a social studies teacher at Apple Valley High School. I'm here tonight to present to Wayne Smith, Jr., for his all-state performance at the recent Minnesota State High School Track and Field Meet. Determination is the word that I would use to best describe Dwayne and all of his endeavors. Dwayne entered the season, his junior year of high school, with an impressive set of accomplishments in track and field. In the spring of 2022, he set the school record in the four-hundred-meter dash, earned a second-place finish at the state meet, and set the Minnesota State Record for the indoor two-hundred-meter dash. However, despite this list of accomplishments, Dwayne never considered becoming complacent. Instead, he remained firm with his purpose to perform to the best of his ability. Dwayne is determined to maximize his potential. Dwayne displayed his strength of character when he injured his hamstring at the start of April. For anyone familiar with track and field, hamstring injuries are devastating to sprinters because of how they hamper an athlete's ability to run at full speed, as well as how long they take to recover from. Despite the challenge of the injury, Dwayne was determined to do whatever he needed to do in order to rehabilitate so that he would be able to compete again by the end of the season. As a result of his commitment to his recovery, Dwayne was able to compete in his first meet by the end of May. In the South Suburban Conference Championships, Dwayne recorded an all-conference performance by winning the four-hundred-meter dash, as well as placing third in the two-hundred-meter. Dwayne continued his success at the three AAA section meet, where he qualified for the Minnesota State Meet in the one-hundred, two-hundred, and four-hundred-meter dash. At this year's state meet, Dwayne earned a third-place finish with a time of forty-eight point five nine seconds. I'm proud of Dwayne's performance, as well as his resolve in the adversity of his injury. I'm excited to coach him again next spring because I know that he will be set on doing whatever it takes for him to reach his full potential. At home, Dwayne has a great support system. His mother and father are here tonight, and they are committed to providing Dwayne with the care and guidance he needs in track and field, as well as in the classroom. In addition to his parents, his younger brother Leo is here tonight. You can always be sure that Leo will be up in the stands, jumping up and down, celebrating Dwayne's impressive finishes on the track. Dwayne is a great role model for his brother, and his parents should be delighted about the young man they raised. Once again, thanks to the school board for recognizing the accomplishments of District 196 students and the academics, arts, and athletics. Please help me in congratulating Dwayne Smith, Jr., for his all-state performance at the Minnesota State High School Track and Field Meet.
We are moving into softball now. I'd like to welcome assistant varsity coach Tiffany Rose to introduce us to the Rosemont High School Girls Varsity Softball Team.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Tiffany Rose, and I'm the head coach. As the head coach, I am honored to speak about the accomplishments of the Rosemont High School Varsity Softball Team and their historic 2023 season. This team was South Suburban Conference Champions, Section 3A Champions, and State Champions in Class 4A. Across the season, they outscored opponents two hundred and sixty runs scored to just thirty-five runs allowed, and ended their season with a perfect undefeated twenty-six-and-oh record. The final team batting average for 2023 was three ninety-five. We had thirty-four home runs, and our pitchers had a combined ERA of one point three eight. This team has been ranked number one in the state for the past two years. They ended this year ranked fifth in the high school state softball teams across the nation, and on Wednesday, they will be honored by the Star Tribune as Metro Team of the Year. Individually, numerous players were recognized for honors across the season, including all-conference and all-section players, four players named to all-state teams, five players named to all-metro teams, two seniors chosen to play in the All-Star Series, and four players named to the state tournament All-Tournament Team. Senior Justice Snippis was named Pioneer Press Player of the Year, Star Tribune Metro Player of the Year, Gatorade Player of the Year, and just yesterday was named Minnesota's Miss Softball for 2023. She was joined at the banquet by teammate senior Paige Zender, who was also a finalist for Pioneer Press Player of the Year, Gatorade Player of the Year, and Miss Softball Player of the Year. This talented and hard-working group also accomplished off the field, earning recognition from the Minnesota Coaches Association for their overall team GPA of three point eight-two. And additionally, three seniors earned all-state academic honors with GPAs above three point seven-five. These were Ella Henderson, Isabel Nozen, and Justice Snippis. This team was led by eight amazing seniors, many of whom will continue their softball careers at the collegiate level, and we thank them for their leadership and years of dedication to the RHS program. But what actually makes this team so special isn't all the team honors and individual awards, but rather, it's the friendship and bond amongst the players, many of whom have grown up and played softball together for over ten years. I have no doubt there is not a single player on this team who would choose to get an individual award over the experience of winning a state championship as a team, and that dedication to each other truly came through in every practice and every game they played. We are incredibly thankful for the continuous support of the larger Rosemont and ISD 196 community, including RHS school administrators, Principal Pete Roback, Athletic Director Mike Manning, RHS staff and teachers, our booster club, the R AAA Youth Programs, media and outlets, and most of all, the family of these players. And now I will introduce to you the players who will be, who are able to be present tonight. Sidney Erickson, Captain Macy Frye, Captain Isabel Nozen, Anna Nook, Captain Justice Snippis, Emmy Yar, Captain Paige Zender, Cece Hanson, Morgan Honeycutt, Grace Nozen, Ari Prinsel, Jorie Frye, Rachel Stone. At this time, I'll ask any of the family members of players present to stand to be recognized. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be recognized and talk about this extraordinary group of young women. Go Irish!
All right. And last, but certainly not least in our recognition tonight, I'd like to welcome Coach Chris Swanson to introduce us to the Rosemont High School Boys Baseball Team.
Good evening. My name is Chris Swanson. Thank you for inviting the Rosemont Baseball Team here tonight. We have a lot of players still playing and out of town because of baseball commitments tonight, but luckily, we were able to have some of our senior leadership here. Eighteen of our twenty seniors, eighteen of our twenty players on our baseball team this year are seniors, and it says a lot about the Rosemont baseball community and the young men here that are willing to represent our team. Our team this year, we were the section champions, we were the conference champions, and we were state runner-up. Of the players here that we're willing, hoping to talk about here, Carter Tyson was an all-state baseball player for us, all-conference baseball player, is going to continue playing at Augustana next year. June Mohler is also an all-conference baseball player that plans on playing baseball at DCTC next year. And then Gabe Jurzak is also going to be going to Concordia St. Paul to be studying business and sports marketing. So these guys are a big part of the eighteen of those twenty seniors and leadership they provided. We also wanted to thank the families for all the support and dedication that they provided this year and over the years, the many long weekend tournaments that they brought their sons to. I also wanted to thank our administration, Mike Manning, for his continued support, Mary Hauptman, also both retiring this year and all the years of support and help, our Principal Pete Roback for all the support as well, and then lastly but not least, all of the assistant coaches and coaches in our baseball program, including the youth baseball programs. So thank you for honoring us tonight and welcoming us to the meeting. Thanks.
All right. Next on the agenda, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
I would like to invite Shelley Munson, Christopher Anyango Robsha, and Jeremy Sorenson to the podium to be introduced as new members of cabinet. So I'll start with Shelley Munson, who is our new Director of Human Resources. She replaces Tom Pedterstun, who is retiring after twenty-eight years of service with the district. Shelley has more than fifteen... Thirty-five. I've got it wrong. I better put my glasses on. Has more than thirty-five. Didn't want to miss that. Years of experience in human resources, including the last twenty-one years in our district, which has involved her in virtually every aspect of the department. We're very fortunate to have Shelley's expertise on cabinet, and now I will let Shelley say a few words.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger, thank you. As you know, one of our greatest assets of our school district are the exceptional employees who dedicate themselves to our student success every day, and I'm just so grateful and honored for this opportunity to lead our human resources staff, school administrators, working with school administrators and other stakeholders to ensure that we can continue to attract and retain and provide the support and resources for these employees. So thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we have Christopher Anyango Robsha, who has joined cabinet, is the interim Director of Finance and Operations. He's taking over for Mark Stotts, who's serving as Director on Special Assignment overseeing construction of the bond referendum improvements. Christopher has fifteen years of experience working in school finance in Minnesota and has led the District 196 Finance Department since 2017. As interim director, Christopher will oversee the district's facilities, finance, nutrition services, receiving technology, and transportation departments, as well as finance, obviously. And so thank you, Christopher, and I'll welcome you up.
Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. One of the roles that we play in the district is taking care of those things that people do not see. So from the bus drivers, who are the first point of contact, to their staff in the kitchens who are feeding our students, to the custodians, for making sure that the environment is safe, and then the AP payroll staff for making sure that our employees are getting paid timely and... timely and accurately. We run the gamut between when school starts and when school ends, and in this role, it is my opportunity to support that work, and I appreciate the kindness and the grace that is being shared to me and given this opportunity to continue serving in a different capacity. So, thank you.
And next, we have Jeremy Sorensen, our new Director of Elementary Education. Jeremy replaces Sally Saliday, who is retiring after 40 years of service in District 196, including the last eight years as Director of Elementary Education. Jeremy has been principal of Deerwood Elementary School for the last six years. As director, Jeremy will oversee our 19 elementary schools in District 196, and will be actively involved in the design process for what will be our 20th elementary school after it is built and opens in the fall of 2025. Jeremy, I welcome you forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. I think this is an appropriate time to thank all of the educators that I've been able to interact with and learn from over my entire career. I want to thank Sally Saliday. If I can do this job with an ounce of kindness that she has, I know I'll be successful. And I want to especially thank the Deerwood community, where I've been for the last six years. I'm very excited to serve the district in a new capacity, and I'm excited for the challenges ahead of me.
So, with that, we have our new cabinet members and leaders in District 196, and I'm just so grateful. They've been here, they've been part of our community, and will continue as we learn and grow together. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. Next on the agenda is our special communication request portion of the meeting. Stakeholders who'd like to speak during the special communication request can submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. Speakers receive four minutes to share their comments. We use a timer for board comments. When the light turns amber, you will have 30 seconds remaining to finish your comments. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Abby Darmody to the podium to share your comments. Ms. Darmody, if you could start by introducing yourself and your connection to the district.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abby Darmody, and I'm incoming freshman at Eagan High School. I'm here today to share the idea of Period Zero. Period Zero would be a time for students and teachers to do zero schoolwork, hence the name. This time would act as a break and a reset before going back to schoolwork, and will allow us to be outside and physically active. As a high school student, I have experienced firsthand what it feels like to have a busy workday with hardly any breaks other than lunch. After my first trimester of finals as a freshman, I came across the idea of Period Zero. I took four final exams in one day, which made me feel very burned out and very stressed, but finals is not the only time I feel burned out, because a normal school day for me looked like this. I would sit through civics, choir, English, Spanish, then had lunch, which I was still sitting at lunch, and then I would keep sitting through study hall, math, and then science. And this was my schedule every single day. I'm very fortunate to be involved in an after-school sport, but not everyone is as lucky as me, and I'm not only involved in gymnastics, but I'm involved in other activities at Eagan High School, physical activities. So, when considering this, I envisioned Period Zero would look like students would have the ability to walk around and be physically active outside. And being physically active is really important to children and young adults. In fact, more students or students who are involved in more physical activities tend to have higher test scores. So, after doing a little bit of my own research on this topic, I came across a study that was recently done out of West Virginia with fifth and seventh graders. The study proved that students with higher aerobic fitness resulted in better standardized test scores. The science behind it is pretty simple. I mean, you develop more brain cells while being physically active, and the more brain cells you have, the easier it is to retain information. But not only does physical fitness help you learn better, but it also helps your mental health. Mayo Clinic says physical fitness is one of the best things that you can do when you're depressed or suffering from anxiety, and there's plenty of research based on physical exercise affecting mental health and test scores. So, by adding Period Zero into our school day, you'd be giving students a higher possibility of excelling and being successful in their academics and their own personal health. I hope my time here was of value today, and thank you for having me and considering the idea.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darmody. It was valuable, and I will just say, you've given me some things to look into also. But lastly, I just want to say, it's no secret to a lot of people that have been in here that going up to the podium and sharing something you're passionate about can be anxious. Maybe it's the amount of physical activity you have that conquers that anxiety, but you may don't look flawless. So, thank you for coming and sharing your thought.
Thank you.
And lastly, if you had any of that research you wanted to share with the board, if you can get it to Brandy Jackson, and she would go ahead and distribute to the board for you also, if you want to take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have 24 items on the consent agenda, and we'll see how fast I can read through them today. We have the minutes from the June 12 special school board meeting, minutes from the June 12 regular school board meeting, designation of identified official with authority for the Minnesota Department of Education External User Access Recertification System, advertising revenue, quarterly advertising revenue, gifts, quarterly gifts, grants, treasurer's report from May 2023, summary of claims from May 2023, schedule of investments from May 2023, certified census, depositories of investment of funds, official depositories of checking accounts, investment instruments, electronic fund transfers, manual signatures on checks of $100,000 or more, liquid dairy milk product bid award, long-term facilities maintenance, 10-year plan for 2024 to 2033, personnel, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, termination of non-renewal and probationary teachers, ship school wellness joint powers agreement, and FastBridge screening progress monitoring assessment platform contract. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove today? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bianca, and a second by Joel. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. That brings us to old business, and I would like to welcome Mary Krieger to discuss the strategic roadmap for operational planning.
Thank you. And I think we're going to see it on the screen. There we go. Thank you. So, what you have before you is a copy of the District 196 Strategic Roadmap. At our last meeting, we shared some context, timeline, more information, and we've brought it based upon, we had a couple of word changes based upon feedback, so I'll highlight those. Under vision, it says developing the whole student and honoring diverse needs and cultures. The other change came under strategic priorities, and that's in D, where it's provide staffing, facilities, technology, and equipment needed to support a safe, and we added the word sustainable dynamic learning environment for all students. And so, that is the final presentation being shared with the board tonight.
Excellent. This is an action item tonight, so before I ask for questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion by Suchan, and a second by Jackie. With that, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
I do, I always have questions.
Bianca?
So, first, it is, this is new to the system, which, so I'm looking forward to seeing how it plays out. I do have a question. How frequently will you report back on this work, either through a scorecard, or a dashboard, or a report to the board? Like, how often will we see how it's working?
Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, if you...
The plan at this point is twice a year.
Twice a year. Okay, great. Thanks. So, yeah, I'm excited. I can't wait to see how you implement the core values and the, you know, I obviously had some concerns, but I think it's new, and I look forward to seeing how it plays out.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, thank you, and thank you for making those couple of changes. I love seeing that when the feedback is reviewed and incorporated, and I think those were some good comments that we made, and a couple of those quick changes that were in there, too. So, with that, there's a motion to approve by Suchan, a second from Jackie. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to welcome Christopher Anyango Robsha to the podium to discuss the 2023-24 preliminary budget.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, member of the board, and our stakeholder public. I am here for the second reading of our preliminary budget for the 2023-24 school year. We went through the presentation at the last school board meeting on June 12. During that meeting, we discussed the revenues that we are anticipating receiving for the upcoming fiscal year, a total of $861,52,000 across all funds. We anticipate expenditures, based on our fast draft, of $630,259,000. Overall, on the budget summary, we are anticipating we will have $389 million of a fund balance. As I noted at our last meeting, most of that is due to the bond proceeds that we will keep in reserve to facilitate the construction of the elementary and the middle school and the other facility items that were included in the referendum that passed. Before we go to the next item, one of the joys of doing the work that we do is when you're off-center or off the grid, and somebody sends something along to you that says something beautiful is happening, and you didn't see it. Well, something beautiful is happening in one of our middle schools, and this is just a kudos to, we talk about touching kids and touching, making impact. So, the budget we are proving is to make sure that the buildings are taken care of, that we have people in the buildings who are meeting the needs of our students. But there are those who go above and beyond, and eighth grader Sinda chose to tell the cafeteria staff. There, so I'll just read what she says instead of paraphrasing, because I think it's just, sometimes you just go with what was written. "Thank you so much for being here. All of you do so much amazing work, which I am so grateful for. Thank you for putting up with a bunch of obnoxious kids. You guys really are the best." I had to read it the way it's written because of that one phrase. "Once again, thank you and have a great summer." So, this is Sinda, who is an eighth grader who clearly appreciates all of you for the last three years. Enjoy the candy, and please share with the janitorial staff. So, it's the people in the kitchen, it's our bus drivers, it's our custodians, who are touching these kids in a way that's making us, all of us, look really good. So, when we talk about our AAA philosophy, arts, academics, and athletics, it's these individuals whom I support in my new role as Director of Finance and Operations, were the ones who make this stuff happen. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is an action item tonight, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Joel, and a second by Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? That's good. Second reading, so pretty straightforward. There's a motion by Joel, second by Bianca. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the new business portion of our meeting tonight, and I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over Policy 506 on student welfare.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. First, let me say, I always regret having to follow Christopher, because I never come with a lovely anecdote or joke for you, so I'm going to work on that for a future presentation. Tonight, I am here before you tonight with proposed changes to Policy 506, student welfare. You'll remember that back in February, the school board amended Policy 506 to allow our schools to stock opiate antagonist, naloxone, in our schools. We also wrote the policy so that school nurses could administer the naloxone in the event of a suspected overdose. This spring, the Minnesota Legislature amended the laws regarding naloxone in schools. For that reason, I've brought the policy back to you tonight for some changes to bring it into compliance with the new laws. So, first, with respect to those new laws, essentially, the Minnesota Legislature did two things. First, they made it mandatory, they have a requirement now, that all schools maintain two doses of nasal naloxone in schools. In addition, the legislature broadened the scope of who may administer naloxone in a school. It was previously only licensed school nurses, and now it's been broadened to all staff members. So, the changes that you see proposed tonight to Policy 506 intends to capture both of those two changes. This is a new business item tonight, so it's simply for your review, and we'll be back for your approval in July. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is new business, it'll be brought back on the July 24 school board meeting, but at this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Thanks, Jill. We'll see you next month. All right. That brings us to the other action portion of the meeting. I'd like to welcome Mark Stotts to the podium, discuss the resolution for sale of general obligation facilities, maintenance, and school building bonds.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the school board, Superintendent Krieger. As you might recall, we did pass a bond referendum on May 9, the largest one in the history of Minnesota, if I recall correctly. And as a result of that, I know a lot of people thought, or maybe think, that we already had plans drawn up, and the money was in the bank and so forth immediately, but it's a little bit more complicated process than that. And so, this is the first step tonight in really, we've already started the planning process, but it's the first step in actually securing the funds and moving forward with construction. So, tonight, I have a resolution before you for the sale of general obligation facilities, maintenance, and school building bonds. I'd like to remind the board that we are doing, I guess, pre-refundament planning, we had intended on doing three different bond issues related to the referendum. We've scaled that back, and we think we're only going to have to do two bond issues. And we have a couple of things working in our favor. One is the taxable market value of properties in the district has grown much more than what we had estimated pre-refundament, so that's going to lower the tax impact. And the second item is that the interest rate assumption we were using pre-refundament was very conservative. We were estimating a rate of about 4 3/4%. We believe we can sell general obligation bonds for a little under 4% right now, and then deferred maintenance bonds for almost 3 1/2%. So, those two items are really working in our favor. The resolution before you is for the sale of $280 million in general obligation building bonds and $20 million in deferred maintenance bonds, for a combined total, obviously, of $300 million. Again, we anticipate this is the first of two bond issues that we'll do during the course of this referendum work, but with that, I'd entertain any questions that you might have, and I'd recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you very much. This is an action item tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. There is a motion by Bianca, and a second by Jackie. With that, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Suchan?
Thank you, Cory. Just a quick question, maybe for the sake of the public as well. What is the logic between, behind, excuse me, splitting the bond issues into two different versus doing it all in one shot?
That's a great question. Because of the size of the referendum, the projects, the construction of the projects will occur over four to five years, and so, we do not need all the money upfront. So, we'll only be paying interest on those monies that we borrow for current needs. Then, after this money is spent, we'll issue the second round of bonds, and then we'll only have to pay interest on that. So, really, it's an interest savings to our taxpayers, and we're trying to manage that as best we can. We believe this will get us till November of '25, and then we would do or recommend a second bond issue at that time, so...
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments from board members? With that, we have a motion to approve by Bianca, seconded by Jackie. All those in... All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a six-zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to welcome Aden Wadenbarger, and please correct me if I said your name wrong, to the podium to discuss the resolution establishing dates for filing for school board election.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Welcome to another election season. I am, as you all know, on November 7th, we have a new general school board election coming up. This is a four-member election. We've got four terms expiring, so four seats are up for grabs for new four-year terms starting in the beginning of January 2024. You'll likely hear from me a few more times leading up to that. Today's task is pretty straightforward. We just need to formally establish what the official filing dates are, where any eligible individuals can submit their affidavits of candidacy to get on the ballot to run for the school board. Those dates are set by statute. There's a specific window, and this year, that falls on August 1st through August 15th. August 15th at 5:00 PM is kind of the cutoff there. Filing simply involves submitting that affidavit of candidacy at the district office. There's a $2 filing fee, or you can submit a petition with 500 signatures. And so, this resolution just kind of establishes that officially. The rest of it also directs the district to submit the, post the notice and publish the notice as required by statute. And so, that is what the resolution before you does. Happy to address any questions related to that. Otherwise, I recommend its approval.
Excellent. Thank you. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Suchan and a second by Jackie. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Pretty straightforward. We have a motion from Suchan, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a six-zero vote. Thank you very much. All right, we are almost done. Brings, we, our last item on the agenda is our board member and superintendent updates. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share tonight? Joel?
Well, like to share, I don't know, but sharing, I will do. The last agenda item that we just talked about was the establishing the filing dates for this coming election in this fall, and I am one of the four that will be up for reelection this fall, and I am today announcing that I am not going to be running for reelection this fall. I've been on this board for 20 years, and it's been the greatest honor and privilege of my life to be on this board, but I just have other commitments that I don't feel that I can really commit as much to this position as I feel necessary for myself to continue in it. So, but that being said, I will do more reflections at our December meeting, and in the meantime, I will, I still have six months to be here and work hard for the citizens and students of our district, which I will continue to do. And as John Curry would say, I will hoe to the end of the road, and I will continue to work for our constituents and our students until the end of this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. And I'm sure we will all have things to say about that, but we have six months to hang on to say, to get our thoughts together. Any, oh, Jackie, go ahead.
Well, seeing how Joel is going to announce, I'm going to announce that I do plan to seek reelection. I've been honored and privileged to work with the district, work with the staff, students, parents, and community members for the past 34 years, and I plan to run for reelection to continue that, working to make the school districts a better place. We've got a super, we've got a tremendous district, but that's because we always work on researching and moving things forward, and I'd like to continue to be a part of that. So, thank you, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other board members with items? Suchan.
I want to first start by recognizing what Joel just mentioned. Joel, I have appreciated you as a mentor, as a friend, as a colleague, and a world-class human being, and you have, you have incredibly contributed to the betterment of our district and servitude of our constituents and staff and stakeholders, and those are mighty, mighty big shoes that you're going to leave behind, and I just thank you for all the counsel you've given me personally throughout my time with, working with you on the board, and I'm sure that, or I'm hoping, that the window for me to reach out to you from here on onwards will always be open.
Yes, much more than six months. I'm not dead yet, so I'm still here.
Yeah, not dead yet.
Excellent. With that, I also intend to run for reelection. It's been an honor of mine to have served on the board thus far, and I hope to work hard to seek another term and trust of the stakeholders and constituents to elect me for another four-year term. Thank you.
Thanks, Suchan. Other board members with items they'd like to share? I can't be the only one that just lets, you're probably waiting for what I'm going to announce. So, I'm not going to address what Joel talked about, because I might get emotional, and I have six months to think about it, so you'll have to wait a little, no. But yes, I will also take this time to announce that I am also going to be seeking reelection for the District 196 school board. It's been the privilege of my life to serve on this school board and to serve the community, and we've got a lot more work to do. So, I would hope to spend my first term and our, the last six or, what, five months until the election, to continue to earn the trust of the public, and I hope to be one of the four to earn your vote come November. Great. Seeing no other items, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent updates.
Thank you. So, I do have to say a very quick thank you, because Joel has been amazing for me ever since I first came to the district as the director of special ed, and we'll miss your leadership, but like you said, we've got six more months anyway, so thank you for that. So, with that, I'll turn it to talk about free summer meals. Children ages 18 and under can get free meals this summer at eight district locations. Breakfast is served from 7:30 to 8:30 AM, and lunch is served from 11 to 1:00 PM at Apple Valley High School, Falcon Ridge Middle School, Dakota Ridge School, Cedar Park, Diamond Path, Echo Park, Oak Ridge, and Thomas Lake Elementary. The free summer meals will be available through August 11th, skipping July 3rd through the 7th, and for more information, just visit the district website at district196.org. Thank you.
Excellent. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Bianca. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a six-zero vote. We are adjourned.